First item on our agenda, have an ordinance to waive competitive bidding for the purchase of a work-ready fitness assessment, and Chief Irwin is here to talk about it.
Good evening, Council. Basically, this is, if you remember, when we did our budget hearings, we talked about hiring a company to do physical assessments, some mental health, dietary stuff and all that. This is the company that our fitness committee felt like did the full-scale brunt of it. It came in at 26,000, some odd change, and that obviously is above the $20,000, so we need competitive bidding waived. I can tell you that we actually did the physical assessments. I thought they were going to kill me. I told them I was an old man, and they said it didn't matter. Get down and get busy. But we had very good participation. A lot of the group is really on to it. They're looking at the actual packet that they gave all of us. It's individually designed with the results, so it's, I feel like it's a pretty good bang for the buck, so.
So we're talking earlier, the participation from the, all your firemen, fire ladies, they...
Everybody did the physical assessment except for one individual.
Okay. Any questions for Chief Irwin? What is the pleasure?
I'll make a motion that we move it forward to council with recommendation for approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please recognize it by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. This will be moved forward with recommendation for approval.
Thank you all.
The second item we have on our agenda is a resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to enter into a memorandum of understanding between the city of Springdale and the city of Fayetteville and Washington County, and this has to do with our AWINS system. Chief?
It does, and I'm going to ask Chief Vaughn to come up here and speak on this because he's our radio expert. But basically, what this is doing is it's putting Washington County on the same plane, basically, as what Benton County did, where all of the fire departments and public safety people went on to the AWINS in Benton County. Washington County's trying to do the same. If you remember, they passed a sales tax to help fund that. It is doing very well, as most of our sales tax are doing, and I think they're actually going to end up with plenty of money. In fact, they're talking about actually increasing our capacity a little bit because they're going to have enough money to do that. Basically, what this does is puts us all on the AWINS system countywide, and it then allows us to hit more than just our two towers, but all the towers in Washington County if we need to do that. It's basically what they call a ring system, and it will also help with the fact that we have more redundancy than we currently have. This will be looked at as one of the biggest AWINS systems in the state, so I think it's a good move. It doesn't really cost us anything, and it's good for everybody in Washington County.
This is, I mean, the larger cities are already, we bought into AWINS.
We are.
Doing all that. It's probably, this probably is a benefit. If everybody's on this, it helps the smaller communities too.
Correct.
Probably more than...
Yes.
Okay.
It does.
Okay.
Doesn't cost us anything, and it does, it does help.
But that helps all of us if everybody's on the same.
That's correct.
But everybody's still responsible for their particular AWINS system.
Right. It's still our equipment, so if you decide as a city council that you want out of it, then you can get out of it, and we go back to what we currently have. Any of them can do that. Fayetteville can do that, or any of even smaller units can do that. It's still our equipment. Now, if you remember right, the agreement we did with AWINS is the towers become state property, which is good for us because then we don't have to pay for the maintenance on that tower site.
And Ernest, we can get out of it, but it's a 24-month notice, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
That's on page...
And?
Page... County's already approved it. I don't know if Fayetteville's approved it yet.
I think Fayetteville goes...
County has approved it already. Fayetteville goes to... ...the city council. They're following, they're following council meetings.
All right. I would entertain a motion. Motion forward, council with recommendation for approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right.
Brian, just a second. Randall, are you hearing this okay?
Captain Moon.
Okay.
All righty. Next, we, let's see. We have a four-minute drive time presentation for chief.
Well, preface this with the fact that this is kind of leading up to the next one in the finance committee. Basically, what we were challenged to do is, is obviously, we're always looking for areas that we can improve our response times and give better coverage to the citizens. And so, I don't know, maybe a month, a couple of months ago, the mayor came to me and said, "We may be looking at a new bond in a few years. Can you start developing where those need to be?" And so, we started doing our due diligence to figure out where those stations might go. As you all know, we came to you and asked for money for architectural design for the remodel of Station 4 because of the issues that we ran into during COVID, and having one shower with six people out there and taking a shower every time that they run a patient became troublesome at best. The remodel prices came in, in my personal opinion, ridiculous. I mean, we were looking at $350,000, $400,000 for the remodel of that fire station. So, we started thinking about alternatives, something that we could do different. Obviously, we had talked earlier about the bond being a relocation of Station 4. We know that through the studies we'd done back in 2012 that we couldn't move it very far, or we end up with holes. So, we did our due diligence, did our four-minute travel times. That's the map that you have. That's the proposed location of what you'll look at at 3377 West Huntsville Road, and how well that covers the area that we needed to cover. But I wanted to get that in front of you so that you all knew that there, there is a method to our madness and the reason behind why we're looking at that property, so.
As part of this discussion, Mike, while we're still in police and fire committee, you might go ahead and, and talk about where you see probably two, two new stations besides the relocation of 4.
Yeah, they're actually on your map.
Are they? Okay.
Can you explain the map?
I can.
I can. If you look at the polygons, all those weird shapes, those are four-minute response times for the different stations. If you look at the very top of it, it actually says, "Proposed station number three." That would be Station 10. And for those of you that were on the council in 2012, when I first got here and we did that study, we told you that we needed a station up north, especially now that we've actually taken on Bethel Heights. That just kind of compounded that issue a little bit. That is right around Robbins Road and Graham. We don't know that that's property available there, but that's a site where we plopped the pin and did the four-minute travel time, and as you can see, it covers all of Bethel Heights and the northern area of Springdale pretty well. The other one is down in the very southeast corner, and am I allowed to say what?
I think so.
Okay. There is land that is being offered to donate to the city for that fire station, and that is proposed station number one. It actually, station number 11. So, if that bond comes through, then that would be another location to do that as well, and covers all of that southeast area.
Is that like Haberton, or where?
Yes, it is. Haberton, just south of Don Tyson.
And number two?
Proposed station number two would be the relocation of Station 4. The round dot is where it currently is. The...
That's just what you'd like to see happen, is basically what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
We, we talked about rebuilding Station 4 on the same site. It would take a redesign because both those lots aren't big enough to, to build the, and y'all know there's significant savings. We've got a design we like that works well, and there are significant savings in site adapting those plans that are already done. Also, you've got the issue, if we were to rebuild on the same site, then what do we do during construction? So, what, what chief's going to propose during finance is, is a, an offer to, to purchase a lot nearby that would allow us to go ahead and build Station 4 whenever we are ready, and, and then we could market the current location, the Station 4. Sell it.
Do any colors mean anything on the map?
Those are the current stations, sir. All those round dots are the current locations of our stations.
What about the colors of the map, though?
That's the different response, the four-minute response times. You see some of them that have two, like a, like an orange and then kind of a purplish color. That's an overlap of where we actually have more than one company that can travel that in four minutes.
Do we have a planned expansion on Huntsville for a trail as well? On that, on that part, right? Right where this proposal is?
Um...
Like a bike trail?
Close. There's a, the extension of Harbor, Harbor and Emma.
Yeah.
It's just south of this site, and it will go, and I think the trail, I think the trail will be on the north side of that. Patsy, do you remember? Yeah, on the north side, so it would be an easy connection. Also, there's the possibility, after that road's built, there's also the possibility of, of accessing, having a second access to the fire station onto Harbor or Emma, or whatever we're going to call that.
That was one appealing factor to that area.
Which would really help, yeah, which would really help too, y'all could get out either way, that way. But yeah, Kevin, the future Pride of Springdale Trail will go right along that road project on the north side, so it would be...
Chief, the green, is that over four minutes?
It is. It's where we can't travel in four minutes, but if you look, there's very few roadways that are in those areas. There's a couple, and they're just, there's just no access there, basically, but yeah, that's exactly what the green is.
So, as those develop, then those, those travel times might go down?
We could fill in those areas with some of those actual response times if we get access, yes. And my guess is, most of them would.
And so, we, the current Station 4, the house that's behind it, we own that too, so that's part of the...
There's not a house there no longer.
The house is gone.
Well, the property.
But yes.
I mean, the property behind it.
It's a double lot. It's just not big enough to fit our footprint on.
Yeah.
And, I mean, I, you know, possibly we could acquire another lot, but you still don't solve the problem of building while, having a fire station open while you're building.
But that could make it more attractive, if you put those two lots together for a buyer. Any other discussion on this? This is just a discussion item.
Yeah, I think we'll, we can pick it up whenever we get into finance then, if there's no other questions on this, on this study. Since this, I asked chief to bring this study separately before the finance, before we dealt with it in finance, so that y'all could see the other two, the other, where the other stations are too.
If there's, if there's no other discussion, now we'll close the police and fire committee. Pass it on to Mr. Watson. So, again, I guess it's, we're kind of merging the two committees on this discussion. We'll go ahead and open the finance, but I had a question on, on those other two. Those are just hopeful, hopeful spots, right?
Those are, those are what we've identified as future, where we'll need future fire stations.
But tonight, with this item number four, we're trying to focus on the one on Allen Springs.
Station 4, yeah.
Okay, so we're opening up the finance, and the first item is the, is a resolution? Yep. Resolution for purchase of property at 3377 Huntsville Avenue. Want to address that, chief?
I can.
Or mayor?
Basically, what it is, is we located this piece of property driving around, and we thought, hey, that might work. We started doing the research on whether or not the travel times would fit with that. They would. We contacted the mayor. The mayor said, "We'll contact the, yeah, realtor," and we did. She already had one offer, but we put an offer in. She did accept our offer. There's a couple of contingencies, and if we need to go into that, I think Ernest can help me with that.
I assume one of the contingencies is approval of council?
It is.
And appraisal.
And the price.
Appraisal, yeah. But we did, but our price was the asking price.
It was.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
We didn't, we didn't get into a bidding war with anybody. They, they said if we would, Ernest will touch on a couple of other contingencies that we think are reasonable that, and they said they would take our offer if, if it was approved.
And it's 4.43 acres?
Yes.
What, what are, what are the other lots that we've been building on lately? What are those sizes?
The smallest we built on was Station 7, and I think it was 2.38 acres all total. Most of them have been three to three and a half, four acres.
Tell me about the access to this property off of...
Huntsville.
I guess, yeah, it's still called Huntsville there.
It is.
Yeah, when you turn, after you make the turn, it turns into White Road.
Okay. So, your access on the White Road?
Yes.
Does that seem like any kind of problems there?
No, actually, it's better because they can see us from both directions when we're coming out. Where we're at right now, a lot of times, we get missed when they're coming around that corner. They don't see us until it's almost too late, so the guys have to sit there for quite a while.
Would there be any exit down Huntsville to the west?
Um, there is, but it's, it's not good.
Go through some residential.
Yeah.
Wouldn't work?
Probably not.
And what about the houses that are on this property?
Um, it is a, I'll say, an older home that we probably would demolish and get rid of. And there's a couple of barns, I think, small storied sheds or whatever that would come down as well.
Why don't you hit those contingencies real quick, since we just talked about the house?
Yeah, actually, one of the contingencies is no termite policy would transfer, which if we're going to demolish, it doesn't really matter. Another contingency, well, obviously, the two big ones are city council approval and that it appraises for the purchase price. The other contingency is they, the seller would like 30 days to, to move out after closing, which we, we've done before in other instances, in that the city would pay for the survey.
For what?
The survey.
The building on the south side?
Maybe an Alton building.
Yes.
There's actually, the two lots adjacent to this lot to the west are both for sale, but my understanding is, we have enough, we have enough room without those two lots.
Correct.
Shouldn't the seller provide the survey to prove what they have to sell to us?
Well, Mike, they asked if we would do it, and I just felt like that, I know about what that survey's going to cost, and I felt that was better than getting, getting into a bidding war, which I wasn't going to do.
They already had another offer.
They already had another offer, so we thought that was probably...
I'm having a hard time figuring out where this is located. Is this right next to the station?
No, it's a block south of the station, actually.
Okay.
East of Central Junior High, or west, pardon me.
You know where Kobe's funeral home was out there?
At the Westfield?
Back behind that.
Okay.
And just so the council...
Is there any way...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Is there any way on that corner on Huntsville that we could put like flashing lights when you guys were coming out of there, or to make it easier to cross that traffic, or do you think that'd be an issue?
I don't think it'll be any more of an issue than we have now. I think it'll be less, to be quite honest, but that's certainly something we could look at.
Have your lights on, too, yeah.
Yeah.
Are, are those commercial buildings to the east?
I do not know, but they are commercial buildings, yes.
Yes.
That's probably what the remainder of most of this is going to end up, I would guess.
How long will it take to get the appraisal?
Uh, I think we have 45 days.
So, we looked at that property next to Central Junior High one time. I've forgotten why. What was that, what were we thinking about?
Animal shelter?
Animal shelter, yeah. And we kind of thought there might have been some drainage issues there.
It does sit lower.
Is this one?
The, the one on, the one on the corner does.
The Central Junior, by Central Junior. What about this one?
It's a...
Just so the council's aware, we did talk to the architect. He did take a look at that, and he looked at actually both pieces of property. He felt like the one that we're trying to buy is probably better, and he did say that our current footprint of our station would fit on there just fine.
But we haven't had any geotag.
We have not. That's what he said, just from looking at the surface of it and the dimensions.
But just to look at it compared with the other one, if that means anything.
Seems better.
Yeah, it, it doesn't seem as marshy, doesn't have the drainage in it.
Any action on this item? We might want to table it. I'll move that we forward it to council with recommendation for approval.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number five is resolution to execute an option agreement for purchase of real estate. I'm confused by this one. Mayor, number five?
Yeah. Patsy, Ernest, why don't you give us the, I got the background on this, but I want to be clear on the...
Yeah, if you look on page 17 of your agenda, it's two parcels of property that the city currently owns off McCullough, McCullough Drive, and an organization that's interested in obtaining an option to purchase this property. We've had it appraised for $260,000, and this would give them the option, I believe until the end of 2022, to purchase the property. Would give them time to perform certain things that are listed on Exhibit B, have the property rezoned, site engineering, environmental clearance, and all, all the normal things that come with, come with the development of the property.
So, I think just the way the, well, I see that the agreement, that's the way it's titled, option agreement for the purchase of, but seems like the title to our resolution, that's why I was a little confused. Seems like we are wanting to sell the property, not purchase the property. Kind of confusing to me, but, and then the other thing is, why do we own this property?
City bought this, I think, I think what we had said, we bought it back in '06? Oh, it was earlier than that. You remember, Patsy? '03? Okay. Paid $165,000 for it, I think.
Why, though?
Well, you, you could answer that better than I could, because I wasn't here. Yeah, Patsy might have some history. And Patsy, I, go ahead and talk about anything you're comfortable with, as far as, I think, I think most of them know what we're...
Obviously, I didn't.
This property was purchased years ago, in either 2003, '05, I don't remember exactly when, for the purpose of extending Ford Avenue up to Emma Street. And it came upon the market. It was a bank re, when the bank had taken back, they offered it to us for a good price. We have since used it when we had the storm damage department brushing stuff on it. The community garden has been out there. As you may remember, we've been kind of working with a group and creating a new kind of housing product at this location, and...
Oh, yeah, okay.
This, them to come, purchase the property, make it available. We don't have all the details worked out on how it would be purchased, but it could become part of that property. It is going to plan a commission tomorrow night to be rezoned to MF16, which we feel would be a suitable density to be placed on that property that's comparable with the region, and this would just make that one, that piece available if we can work all this other stuff together.
Okay, thank you.
We're not foreseeably doing anything on that piece of property for the near future, right? I mean, it's just been sitting?
No. No, Randall, the, like Patsy mentioned, we've, Public Works has used it to stage when, when they get a, I don't know, Brad, when you get enough stuff in, then you call a chipper, and they come in and, and chip debris, but we've got other, we'll find other locations to do that if, if we end up selling this.
I'll make a motion for it, to move it forward to council with recommendation for approval.
Jeff, did, did that clarify your...
Not really. I still don't like the title of the resolution.
Yeah, and it seems like it should say, "For the sale of real estate." Is that what you're talking about?
What they did is that they used the term of the title of the agreement. They put it in the title of the resolution, and then that's, makes it confusing.
Well, it's authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute this option agreement. That's attached.
And the agreement is for the purchase, so...
It's for the, it's for us to sell property.
Right. It's, it's an option agreement for the purchase of real property we own.
For a particular buyer?
Yes.
Yes.
It's listed in the option agreement. I reword it however you want, but it's, it's giving the mayor and city clerk the authority to execute this document.
Mm-hmm, the one that's attached.
This organization...
Which is...
Attached.
Which is the option agreement for purchase of real estate.
Right.
Yeah. I guess I could have put it in quotes, "Option agreement for the purchase of real estate." I guess I could have put that in quotes in the title.
So, what is this zone right now, Patsy? And they want to, and the city wants to rezonate to an MF16?
Which is compatible with...
It could say, the title could say, "To execute a document, document entitled, option agreement for the purchase."
So, is the option agreement contingent on us rezoning this?
No, it's just one of the things...
Okay.
That's contemplated during this time period that would be done, during the option period.
While, while they're doing their due diligence, yeah.
Okay. So, procedurally, we got a motion, and I want to second it, but how would that affect you rewording this and moving it to council?
As long as you, as long as everybody's clear on what it is, you're, whoever, who made the motion, Amelia, as long as Amelia's good with however y'all decide to reword it, and then your second will be fine.
One, I can just put the option agreement for the purchase of real estate in quotes. I mean, that's, because that's the document that mayor and city clerk are asking for authority to sign.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. The, the title of the document needs to be in there because that's what we're signing. And for them, for the originators of the document, it, for them, it's to purchase. And for them, for the originators of the document, it, it, for them, it's to purchase.
I'll second it with the quotations.
Does that work for you, Jeff?
Yeah, it works for me. Hey, what about the, what about the purchase price? How was that determined?
Sorry?
How was the purchase price determined?
We had appraisal.
Okay, we have a motion and a second contingent upon the title having quotation marks placed in it. Uh, any further discussion concerning that motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you. Item number six.
Okay, this is, uh, yeah, I'm gonna give it to Ernest in a minute, but this is the property we just bought not very long ago, uh, to straighten out in, at some point in the future, to straighten out the S-curve out by Shaw Family Park. We bought two acres, plus or minus. And, uh, we had someone approach the city, uh, uh, just recently, very recently, wanted to know if the city was, was, uh, interested in selling any of that back. We don't know yet where the, obviously, we don't want to sell it until we know how the road's gonna need to be done. So, we asked if they would be interested in a right of first refusal. And then, when the road is done, or the right of, at least the right of way is determined, then we can talk about selling it. And, uh, that's how this came about, is that...
That is, and it, it applies to the, the northern parcel, the plat- survey plat shows two parcels. It, as is referenced in the resolution, only applies to the one acre parcel. And it would give this individual the right of first refusal. In other words, if the city was to, uh, obtain an offer from someone to purchase the property, and we were inclined to accept that offer, then this person would have the opportunity to match that.
We have no intention of doing anything, though, until we, until we get the road like we want it, so...
And what's the benefit to the city?
Uh... Well, you know, we've got somebody interested, but that's, that's pretty well it.
I think, I think when we...
Doesn't hurt us either way.
I think when we bought it, you mentioned, specifically mentioned, we'd probably end up selling part of it.
And that's probably what the problem is.
I'm sorry, what?
Once we knew where the road was gonna go.
You've got an interested, you've got a person who's interested and willing to wait. And I, I can think of no reason we won't want us, we won't want to sell it when we're, when we get our road done.
So, are they just wanting to, just that north little piece of it and split it off, or...
Half of it, I think.
The one acre parcel of the two. There's two parcels, it's the...
It'd be the north, north of the road.
One acre parcel.
So, how would it work if there wasn't a right of, uh, a first refusal? And, uh, can we do a bidding war in, in a sense from a, from a purchaser? And potentially get more from a market?
Well, the way it reads...
Yeah, we can get an offer, and then they would have to, they, they would have to meet it.
But the way, the way it reads the terms would be, if we elect to sell, then the purchase price would either be the listing price at the time of sale, or if somebody makes us an offer, this person would have to match the offer.
Doesn't sound like we're hurt either way.
But I don't see why we want to do that. I guess is what I'm missing.
Well...
Guess if you don't do it, you take the chance on somebody not being interested in you selling it, I don't know.
Well, surely, they'd still be interested if they're wanting this back.
They're wanting the right of first refusal, and they, they don't have to be interested anyway. We're not tying them down.
The way, the way this came about, Jeff, is we told them we didn't want to sell it until we knew more where the road was going. And, uh, we talked about the possibility of they would be required to dedicate the right of way for the road or whatever, but that wasn't gonna work well. And it was mentioned, well, we couldn't just do a right of first refusal. I don't see that it helps or hurts or...
I guess, I guess it, did, were we, did we feel some obligation to, was that in the negotiations with them, when acquiring some right of way or something that we could give this back?
No. No, and I don't even know who, I don't know, I don't even know who this is. I don't know who the, if they were involved in any of the...
I don't think they were.
I think we just leave them by, is what happened.
So too.
Well, typically, uh, I think you would, you would be getting some benefit before you'd ever enter into something, don't you think, Mike?
Yep. Um, there's no real incentive for the city to do anything. Right now, if, if at some point in time we decide to sell it, then it's o- it's on the open market and...
The way I look at it, as well, we're, we're not locked into anything, and they're not locked into anything, so I don't know why we...
Well, why even do it then?
Yeah, why we mess with it?
There's no, juice ain't worth the squeeze, frankly.
Yeah, I'm in agreement.
We were, we were just...
We were approached, so we don't have the authority to...
We were trying to accommodate?
Yeah, we were trying to accommodate. We didn't see any harm either way, but if y'all don't want to do it...
No real incentive to do it right now.
Just...
It's your call, that's why it's here.
That's why it's here.
I, I wonder if it might affect getting any offers on the property if somebody knows, somebody's come in right behind them.
Gonna get, be outbid, it's waving, entering.
Why even make an offer?
Sure.
That's, that's true.
But it also says if we place it on the market, then that triggers it as well, whatever price we put on the market.
But they're not bound, this doesn't bind them in any way.
We're the ones getting bound, from what it sounds like.
Well, we don't care where the money comes from.
No.
If we're, if we're gonna get our asking price, we don't care who pays it, whether it's them or somebody else.
That's true.
I don't see that we're bound either, but, uh, but if y'all, if y'all don't think it's worth doing...
I mean, I'm obligated to bring it forward, so thank you for doing that. I don't have the right to say yes or no, so... For no motion.
No action, then we'll move to, is item number seven still on the mind? Item number seven?
Brad's coming.
This is a rela- resolution accepting the bid of, uh, the construction company and executing a change order to reduce that price. The Park Street Intersection project came in over budget. We asked Garver to value engineer it and work with the contractor. And, uh... You have the proposed change order, which would reduce the, uh, price of the project by $232,000, so...
This is for the roundabout on Park?
Yeah, the...
And two roundabouts. Well, not two roundabouts, one roundabout.
The intersection at Emma...
Two intersections.
And the...
That's where we're straightening out the, uh, intersection with Berry Street and Emma?
Right. Yeah, it's got a wiggle, but we would straighten up the...
Well, we're, we're straightening it out to some extent, and then the roundabout on the south end.
It's a square roundabout.
Can you, uh, e- explain value engineering for those who don't understand it?
That's where the engineer goes back through after they have the contractor to work with. Contractor proposed some, some items that they saw in the project that if we were to make changes, would reduce the price. So, I believe there were three original proposals. One of them is shut Emma down for an extended period. We rejected that one, and we accepted the other two.
So, basically, we got, we opened the bids, Crossland, uh, Heavy Contractors was the low bid.
Yes, and we negotiated with the low bidder.
So, it just went down a little bit more.
Still exceeded the budget.
Still over our estimate.
So how, so what's the bottom line? Where's this stand? If we take this, uh, reduction, where's that stand over your original estimate?
I don't remember.
Well, it would be the...
Did you say it's like one point?
Three million thirty-seven thousand minus the two thirty-two, right?
Okay, the engineer's estimate was about 2.6 million.
Pretty still above that, but, I mean, that's just an estimate. We weren't, we hadn't really budgeted that, have we?
In this street bond, yeah. Yeah, we just, all we had was, all we had was engineering estimates.
So, you're saying then this, this puts it about a hundred grand over his original estimate?
It was 2,573,150. And now it's 2.8, so it's about two and a half, 250,000.
Yeah, 250,000 over what the original estimate was.
Any action on this item?
Move the resolution be forward, recommendation for approval.
Second.
Have a motion and recommendation, uh, motion and second forward to council with recommendation for approval. Is there further discussion?
What's our timeline?
Remember, remember construction time, or, or it'd be, it'd be a, I don't know, when you would foresee giving them a notice to proceed once this is appro- if this is approved next Tuesday?
We'd give them notice to proceed is, I think it's usually within about a month, but there's not a specific timeline right now.
There's no time limit on the, on completion of the contract?
The contract time has a timeline, and I don't, I don't remember what it is.
Will it be in here?
That's what I'm looking. Do you know? About ten months.
Ten months?
Mm-hmm.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Alright, thank you. We'll close the finance committee.
Okay, are we down to discussions?
Yes.
Brad, I think it's, you have Brad first? Oh, Neil, okay. That's why there's nothing in here.
Is there a three-minute time limit on him? If there isn't, you need to oppose it. I will be here all night.
Neil Johnson here, representing the Strangial Airport Commission, along with Adam White from Garver Engineers.
Thank you.
Uh, last fall, we had a discussion of the need for additional hangars at the airport. I think we have approximately eighty on the waiting list for those. Uh, as you know, most of the revenue generated for our operation locally is from hangar rents, that along with some fuel flows. Most everything else depends on grants from the state and the feds. We, as a group, as a commission, elected to look at the property on 265, which is just across the street from Ford Avenue, uh, entrance into the 265. It will accommodate four hangars, hundred by hundred, which would be, uh, u- uh, multiple-use hangars. We petitioned the state for a grant to build the infrastructure, taxiways, and that hangar. And we, they have not acted on that request at this time. Or the, we have requested a, a total of 350,000 grant from the state, which we feel confident we will get it. There was a little, they did throw a little curve to us that we needed to at least have one of these hangars occupied, or a need, or a, a contract on it. At this point, we don't have anyone to build that hangar, and we elected to do it ourselves. And that, that's why we're here tonight, to say that we would probably, we'll probably come to the city and ask them for approximately $700,000 to build that hangar. That's not to say we won't get additional funds for that, but we can't promise that. But there's funds available, more funds coming available. I'm gonna let Adam expand on that a little more. He has the numbers and a little more detail.
Thank you, Adam White with Garver Engineers. I think Neil did a pretty good job there. The map that you have in front of you here, the red area, that's the taxiway leading out to the development area. That's the one that we have state grant fund applications in already to the state for about $350,000. It also includes infrastructure like water, sewer, electric, that you don't see on the map, but it's a part of that as well. And so, the state's told us that if we can get funds to construct a hangar to go along with it, then they would support that application of $350,000, uh, for the infrastructure improvements. But unless the city can either build the hangar, or, uh, if they can get a developer to come in and... They don't want to build a taxiway to nowhere effectively, and just wait for development to come. So, that's where the request comes from.
Is this 700 for one hangar?
Yes, sir, it's for one hangar, and then the blue apron that's out in front of that one hangar.
Now, what's, what's the revenue on that, would be on that hangar?
James, or why would y'all roughly know what the annual revenue would be for a hundred-by-hundred hangar? Twenty-three hundred a month?
Uh, do you know, uh, and I, I hadn't heard anything, Dave. We'd thought that there might be some rescue plan guidance, uh, maybe as early as today, they're saying May tenth, but we thought we might have some today. We know that there's additional FAA grants, or we've been told that there will be additional FAA grants. Are you hearing anything about any guidance on those yet, or...
A, a little bit, you are correct. We do expect you to get a third FAA package. You've already gotten two so far, to the tune of, I think, around a hundred thousand total, or maybe more between them. Probably another 70,000 coming to you. Those grants are to offset damages to, because of the pandemic, or, uh, we expect it to also just, you can use it for general, um, annual budget items, like salary, maintenance, things like that, of course. Use it for that, and then those budget items free up to pay for other things is usually what airports are doing with those funds. If that makes sense.
Okay. But the grant, the grants we've already applied for, for the apron?
Mm-hmm.
And the, and the taxiway, I guess, or the, or the connection? That will, that would pay for the water and for the utilities, correct?
Yes, so the grants we already applied for, that $350,000, there is a match associated with those of about 75,000, and so you could, you could say the match could help fund some of that work.
What, what would that grant pay for if we get it?
The state grant, yeah, that pays for this red taxiway you see that leads out to the, the development area. And then there's also water, sewer, and electric improvements to basically, if a hangar developer, developer came in, it's only service lines that they had to pay for.
So, it's not expected it would cost any more than, um, 352 plus 75?
That's right, it's already been bid, APAC was a low bidder. That's based on hard bids.
So, total cost of the city then would be, uh, uh, 775,000. Seventy-five thousand two hundred for the apron, and then the 700,000 for the hangar.
That is correct.
Is there something underneath this lighter blue as far as some sort of structure?
That's an old structure that was demolished by the airport, so maybe years ago. Yes, sir.
I guess the, back to my question about the infrastructure, the water especially, and the reason I'm harping on water is because it does sound like that, from what a little bit we know so far about the rescue plan, it sounds like the city's, uh, the city has some ability to spend some of that money on water and sewer. And that could take some off of this, uh...
That is correct, yeah.
Coming out of, we currently have, I don't know.
What's the expected life of the hangar?
Oh, boy, I mean, I think, uh, you hear twenty-five, thirty years for a building, but I could tell you there's hangars at that airport that have been there for fifty, sixty years, so...
So, you're saying thirty years?
Thirty years is what you'd probably see before you have some major maintenance associated with it, new doors, roof.
So, help, let's, let's make sure everybody understands too, if, if, for, for a privately built hangar, Neil, if we allow somebody to come in and build a hangar, then in that thirty years, isn't that when that's, that becomes city-owned?
Yes, I think, uh, twenty-five to thirty-five years is your typical reversion clause. So, you execute a land lease with the private developer.
What percentage of the hangars we have right now are owned by the city versus privately owned?
I think there's only one land lease hangar right now, is that correct? Yes, just one, so the other fifty to sixty are owned by the city. The only exception is the ones off 265. Those are actually off airport property.
Right, right, okay.
So, you have these other three spots, or four actually, looks like, for future hangar facilities?
That's correct. We actually designed all the infrastructure improvements, working with Patsy and her team to support.
They would all be using this same taxiway?
That's correct.
And would have to be extended then to get to those?
Yeah, a- apron would be extended to those hangars in the future, yeah.
That would be the only access we'd ever need off... That would be the only access we'd ever need off 265? For those future hangars?
I, I would expect that we could even replicate this as we go north and have a second group of hangars even further north than this in the future. Yeah, there's room for about one more set of four to the north.
But for these that have arrows on them?
Yes, that's the only access.
Would be adequate off the highway.
That's correct.
So basically it'd take the 30 years to recoup our investment back at 2,300 a month, right?
Correct.
Well, Mayor, I think, I don't think that red is off the highway. I think that's off the runway.
Yeah, that's off the taxiway, yeah.
So how do we access, so if we build future hangars, so yeah, I was, I was backwards. So further, if we go further east?
Mm-hmm.
With hangars that front, is that, is that also airport property?
It is, yeah. And not just catch on this plan, we have a, an access coming in off 265 that sneaks behind CR Crawford's hangar there, and then it runs down 265 to access all those hangars in the future.
Any problem getting access off of 265 from the highway department to access those?
We're gonna use the existing driveway that's already there that serves CR Crawford. That's actually airport's driveway.
Already have one, so then you can, can you expand that one or just use the existing?
We'd love to line it up with Ford. That'd be great, but a little too pricey right now, yeah.
You may know that, I don't know, Patsy, you may know this too, because we've looked at it a lot. Highway 265, you know, we, we're hoping to work with our DOT to get that section widened so that we can have a center turn lane at some point. Will that affect any of these, the ability to do any of these, or do you know how much existing right-of-way they've got now? Can they do that within their existing right-of-way?
Yeah, we did look at that as part of this. This is why we're set pretty far back, about 80 feet off the edge of the highway, just in case the whole widening came our way and to leave room for trail, sidewalk in that area too.
So is, is there any chance of any kind of grants to help build this?
There are. The state grant season rolls over again July 1st. It's a whole new ballgame, first come, first served grants. But, you know, they've already, we're already asking for two grants with this development right now, asking for a third one. No promises there, but I can promise you we're gonna apply for it. But we have good bids in hand, pretty low bids for the environment that we're in right now in hand, and that's why we wanted to go ahead and come to you now.
Are there any issues if we, if we get out ahead of this with building and then grants become available? Are there usually reimbursement, I mean, grants that we can go back and capture or?
For a certain duration, we still need to be in the construction process. We can't recoup those grants like, you know, post certificate of occupancy. So you got a window of probably a few months into the state's next fiscal year, which starts July 1st.
And, and there are, there are folks that are ready to commit to a lease on a hangar?
I think there's currently 80 people on the hangar waiting list for the airport.
So you feel confident that, you know, once the hangar's up, no problem getting it leased?
You could probably get the leases done now if you'd like, yeah, absolutely.
What's the timeframe in getting all this construction done?
Yeah, so we'd have to bid the hangar out. We only have the site work bid out right now, so probably a few months to do that. And then hangar construction right now, I'm just gonna guess four to six months. So you're probably looking at end of this year to have it complete.
How do we, how do we determine hangar rent?
That may be a question for the airport folks to, to answer. Best I could probably say is fair market value with the surrounding airports, but.
How many square feet in that hangar?
10,000.
I'm sorry, James. What'd you say?
Then it's responsible for maintenance?
No, is the, is, is James, it'd be a city-owned hangar. I think the city takes care of that unless it's a special lease agreement.
Hey, James, would you come up here, please, because we got one, one member on Zoom and he can't hear what you're saying. And I'm sure you got a lot good to say.
If it's a land lease, they're responsible for the maintenance of their hangar, but a city-owned hangar, it's our maintenance.
So if we build it, we maintain it?
Yes.
So we still lease it out basically $2.30 a square foot?
Correct.
And that's fair market?
Yes, we, we stay competitive with the other airports. Otherwise, we'll go in, get in, they'll go full.
You know, if they got waiting lists like we do?
Oh, yeah, they all do.
Is, is there insurance requirements on the tenant?
Yes, they have to have insurance. We have insurance on just our stuff.
Thank you, James.
And we have, Kobe, is it 13? 13, we, 13 million we have?
Yep, approximately 12,100,529 dollars.
What happened, what happened to the 900,000 from last week?
Were there some cents involved?
We round up.
So we got like 12.1, correct?
Yes, sir.
I figure somebody would pay more for a shiny new hangar than there was an old rusty one.
I wish we had better answers on the, on the rescue plan money. We just, they just haven't come out with it yet. Because, you know, we're certainly gonna try and figure out ways to free up money.
What happens if we, we construct the, if we construct the, the hangar, we're guaranteed that we'll get the apron up, right?
If you were to approve the, the funding for the hangar, the first thing we'd go to is the state and say, now we have hangar funding, please approve our grants. And for some reason they didn't approve the grants, obviously we wouldn't move forward without coming back to you, so, yeah.
My point is, we would not start, if, if the, the grant for the ha, for the apron were not approved, we would not start construction on this hangar, right?
Yes, I hope I'm not speaking out of line. I can't speak for the commission, but yes, that's my expectation. So yes, that's correct.
And we got time to know all that before we start building anything.
In spite of the chairman of this commission, I wouldn't feel uncomfortable with us, since we do have 12.1 of supporting the airport commission. And I would feel comfortable with committing to them because they have done a, a good job and they're, they're progressing out there with not a whole lot of help and a pass from the city. So I'd feel comfortable proposing taking this out of our 12.1 million that we have and making a pledge to build the hangar.
I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, because I ran the numbers for Neil. It's an 8.6 million dollars worth of improvements over the last 20 years. And of that, I think only 7% roughly came from the city, so they have done a good job of finding grant funds whenever available.
I hate to admit it, but I think Mike asked the most important question tonight, and that is, we really don't want to spend that money if we don't know we're gonna have runway built. So we need to make sure that that happens, move forward with this.
Absolutely, yeah. Can't build a hangar if there's not a driveway to get to it, so understood.
I'd echo Mike's comments. As far as spending the money, they have been very good stewards of their money. If we go back to, some of you all wasn't on the council, it wasn't to this magnitude, but when they just did the renovations and they did it all themselves, they've always, in my opinion, since I've been on here, have done a very good job. And a lot of people don't realize that's a busy, busy airport and I think it probably.
Number two in the state.
Whatever it is, it's nice. We're gonna try to make it nice.
You can imagine if they had a decent chairman, what would happen.
Yeah, I would say that when the state recently did their economic development study, Springdale Airport's annual economic impact was $20 million a year to the city. And I think that was number three or four in the state for that class of airport, so, yep.
Mayor, if, if, if this moves forward, I'd, I'd recommend that the money be taken out of the capital projects fund. There's 2.67 million in there, and we need to draw that down instead of taking that out of the undesignated general fund budget.
Okay. Would that work for the fire station too? Lot?
Yeah, the sooner we can take that down to zero, the easier, more simplified.
So if we move forward with this, how do we do it? With a resolution or just a motion or?
I guess we would come back to you.
With a resolution?
With a resolution.
Resolution at the council meeting.
But it would probably be after its bid, wouldn't it?
Yeah, I think we have your support right now. All we would, we may ask for a draft of the resolution that we could take to the state to show y'all support behind the project.
Resolution of commitment for construction.
We could do that Tuesday if y'all want to do that.
Yeah.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Now Brad's going to come to talk about low-impact development, right?
Has everybody read all this? We're bringing this because it'll give more options for developers to handle their stormwater. I think it's been, it's been a request in Northwest Arkansas as a region to move this direction. When I first got here, I looked at the then-proposed design manual, and I found it short on design information. It's got lots of pretty pictures and lots of nice ideas, but it had, I didn't think it had been vetted for Springdale, so we're just now coming forward at that. I think one of the main opportunities to use this is gonna be in our downtown area. Is in the downtown area in particular, maybe the new seed districts. I don't see a lot of detention ponds being built downtown, and this would give options to help control stormwater without building detention ponds. Our current design standard, which was revised in 2018 after the, the storm four years ago.
Right.
We, we brought this forward in response to the council request for can we help our, can we help reduce flooding? So that was a response at that time. We stiffened up the detention requirements. Now what we're coming to you with is other options besides building ponds. We never specifically said that detention had to be a pond, but in most cases, when there's plenty of wide-open space, that was the easiest way for most developers. This is just bringing some options to let them use their, their properties in as efficient a manner as they can find. I passed out a, a little handout, kind of a proposed language that would come in an ordinance to you if, if this is something you're interested in. The first, the first sheet highlights in yellow where we would put it in what our current standard says. It's just called other methods, and it seems to discourage low-impact development. The changes would specifically allow it, and we have under this, other methods, allowed some low-impact development in the last couple of years. Just out at Blue Cross Blue Shield, they daisy-chained some smaller ponds. At Little Emma, out toward the airport, they used permeable paving to help meet their detention requirements. All of those things are allowed specifically and give some design guidance on how to, how to make that happen.
Has the permeable paving been used very often here?
The only place I know of it was at Little Emma, and they brought that proposal to us. We didn't really have a way to evaluate it, so we worked with the design engineer, the paver manufacturer, and we found the American Society of Civil Engineers has actually, actually has a design guideline. And that's specifically mentioned, or that's our guidance that we use for permeable pavers in LID.
How did that hold up during this last deluge?
Very well, as far as I know.
There wasn't any major problems with it?
I haven't heard any. The issue you're gonna have with some of these is in the downtown area, we don't always have good storm drains.
Really? Gee.
So as we develop, we're probably gonna expand to improve our storm drainage, particularly park out to the airport. We're gonna have a new detention, very large detention pond, so we could put storm drainage in there, which would let these tie to that.
Detention, that detention, y'all will remember that you're talking about the detention area that we're, that's out for bid right now?
Yes, at the airport.
Yeah. Any questions or?
Just because I don't remember hearing it, there's a pond planned at the airport?
Off of?
Yeah, there's a, it's a.
It's south of Emma.
Right, it's the west, it's off the, it's west of the, the western edge of the airport property, south of Emma. Detention, there was a study done and it was determined that, and we got a climber, it was determined that all of the downtown areas around Spring Creek, if that was built, would the flood, flood areas would, would retreat to within the storm, within the existing banks. So it would take all the area in downtown out of the floodplain, which is a big deal for developers. So, yeah, we've, y'all have been, we've been talking about that for a while. We finally got it designed and bid. And so we'll be coming forward with you to, for that, once we get a bid contract awarded.
We don't need to do anything.
Well, Brad, are you, you wanna give them a little more time to chew on this? Or do you wanna try and bring a, you wanna bring a resolution next committee meeting? Or just, we just need to basically change this in the ordinance, right?
Yes.
I say we bring it back to committee one more time with the formal presentation.
Okay.
Formal document.
Okay. Okay, good deal. Thanks, Brad. That's everything from us, unless y'all have something else.
Unless Kobe's gonna steal another 900,000 from last week.
We need to move that clock forward 10 minutes so it's clear when Mike.